Yes.
There's no one online?
No.
Okay. All right, I'd like to call the September 20th, 2022 City Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Let's see, Mark Klecker here, Rich here, Tony's excused, Colin here, nice, Jason here, is Amanda? No, we don't have nobody online, so, okay. Everybody read the minutes from last? Anybody got any issues, problems? I'll make a motion to accept, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, blighted property designations.
All right.
We're up.
All right. Afternoon, everyone, appreciate it. On your agenda today is 15 properties that the Redevelopment Authority has identified as some of the worst of the worst. You know, if you talk to the coenforcement officers, these are the properties that have caused them a lot of pain and strife for many years. So, they've been blighted by the Blighted Property Review Committee, and the Redevelopment Authority asked that the planning commission continue on that designation of blight and blight these properties. So, the intent probably for the majority of these properties will be demolition, there is a couple that, once we are able to get inside and evaluate them, you know, we'll be to make that determination at that time.
You can't go in until we say they're blighted, right?
That is correct. We do not attempt to enter the property until we go through the legal process, just to save us any strife down the road, so.
Gotcha.
But, yeah, they're probably, you know, they're all worse of the worst, there's a few with holes in the roofs, porches falling down, so, you know, neighborhood complaints, so, just a continued effort to fight the blight within, you know, the city neighborhoods.
Yep, all right.
These are all residential?
They are residential, and they are all vacant.
And you've gone through your steps already to get to this point, so.
Yeah, we're prepared, we're, you know, after this, it'll be presented to the Redevelopment Authority Board next month, and we'll proceed with condemnation, so.
Okay.
How many of these are owned by out-of-town landlords versus local?
I don't have that off the top of my head, I know there are a couple that are owned by out-of-town landlords, there are a couple on, there's one on there in particular that we have dealt with in the past, and we filed condemnation against another property, and he drug us out in the court on that one, that property as well, so we're prepared that he will do that this time, but he is a habitual offender when it comes to blight in the city of Erie.
Yep. Oh, yeah.
I'd be pleased to make a motion to declare the properties blighted.
I'll second that. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Awesome. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Aaron.
All right.
Thanks, Aaron.
Jake, you were gonna highlight some things on the short-term rental regulations?
Um, yes. So, this is, you know, what we have, obviously, we've looked at the short-term regulations in the past, and have had a couple of public hearings. Council has, council's kind of asked that, you know, we take another look at the draft regulations, strengthen them up some more, and before, I would expect before council would have another public hearing, you know, of a revised draft of the regulations. So, today is not meant to be a formal review, I just wanted to get the ball rolling. The areas that are highlighted are additions to the previous draft that the planning commission had endorsed and recommended approval to council, so, these are additional regs. And again, I think the intent is to try and address some of the concerns that have been heard at the public hearings, you know, regarding permitting the short-term rentals in the various residential districts, and to help strengthen those up. So, one of the things that the Solicitor's Office told me is that, you know, they really took a look at now that this has evolved further over the last, even just over the last year, six months to a year. More communities are dealing with this and creating these regulations, so we have more to look at and work off of. So, I think that's where the additional language that, you know, maybe a year ago, communities hadn't even really implemented yet. So, this is a fresh update. From the ordinance, there hasn't been any changes since the last draft, as far as the districts where the use would be permitted. That has not changed. So, the, what's really been added are several new conditions that all short-term rentals would have to meet. In some cases, it wasn't that we hadn't already proposed the condition, but it's much more fleshed out, and there's much more detail, as far as the licensing is concerned, when you look at these minimum regulations. So, a lot more detail in Sections 1 and 2 for the licensing requirements, even the, kind of like a property manager and contact person, you know, a lot of these.
The 24-hour contact person, yep.
Yes, they're much more fleshed out than they were in the previous draft.
So, I guess on that point, I mean, I think it's great, but with respect to, you know, looking at existing ordinances for residential license, rental license requirements, the contact information there, it seems like a lot of this, by and large, is covered under what your typical rental language would be required, maybe there's a bit more detail, but, you know, it seems like some of this is, I don't want to create, say, just creating, you know, adding text, because I agree with the sentiments here, but we've got, you know, there's rules and regulations here, you know, somebody has to be appointed for, you know, the, was it, we've got the application license should be there, there's two-year terms, all of that, we have a lot of that for, you know, non-short-term rental, traditional rentals. How does that get taken into account here? How does that fit in? Because I think, obviously, there's that, you know, question as to when, there's a little crossover between the two.
Well, and that's, I mean, that's a good point, Colin, the, obviously, those two ordinances, you know, these additions, these amendments to the zoning ordinance need to be in step with the existing rental ordinance for all residential rentals. And that was one of the attempts that the Solicitor's Office, that kind of came into play as far as just even the definition of dwelling, to make sure that those two ordinances lined up. So, it, there probably is some redundancy there, that similar language is in the existing rental ordinance, but by having it in the zoning ordinance, it's, it kind of makes it a little unquestionable, as far as that's concerned. And this will still be, these will still be standalone, if, for instance, the rental ordinance was amended in some way.
Yeah, I guess that maybe is sort of where I was going with it, is, you know, should some of this maybe be considered in that landlord and rental, just because, at least from my perspective in conversations with individuals, a lot of the concerns are, I'm not going to say are not valid, but there's a lot of anecdotal kind of claims about them, there's not necessarily as much evidence, factual evidence on it, and so, while I appreciate the concerns, you know, you can boil down the issues to, you know, absentee landlords, enforcement of existing ordinances and laws, and, you know, just failure to actually register properties. I mean, fundamentally, those are the three issues that are what we're looking at, but I just, I would hate to see us craft language for the purpose of crafting language without there being anything specifically driving what we're doing.
When, and I guess, just to add on to, just to add on to that, the, what this additional language enables us to do is that having it specifically referenced in the zoning ordinance would mean that if it's not being adhered to, that would be considered a zoning violation.
So, it gives you more enforcement avenues?
Absolutely. Gives us a lot more enforcement authority than the rental ordinance itself, that just, you know, essentially is, you need to have the property registered, licensed, and inspected, and continue to meet that schedule. So, having this be specific to the zoning ordinance is going to allow us to enforce it, along with all the other zoning requirements, so, that's most definitely a good thing.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great, I mean, that, I think is probably one of the biggest frustrations, is, you know, obviously, nobody wants parties, you know, going crazy at 11:00 on a Tuesday, but enforcement is a bigger issue there more than anything.
I mean, the only thing I noticed in this, that the use of open fire, fire pits, charcoal burning grills, or other devices is not permitted.
Yeah.
Why not?
Yeah, I looked that one up, and could not find any reference to it anywhere else in the ordinances. I mean, quality of life, I could understand.
Once again, we're not here to rewrite anything, but, next time this gets in front of somebody, that should, because that's one of the new things you highlighted.
Right, that was an additional.
Yeah.
Well, soon as that was.
Really? You're coming after my steak?
Yeah, and, you know, I haven't had a specific discussion about that with the Solicitor's Office, but knowing that, you know, the research that they had done, you know, we'll have to get more information on that, I mean, the city does have an ordinance that regulates recreational fires in the city, and we would certainly want to be consistent with that. So, that's something that we can kind of look more into the genesis of that.
It wouldn't make sense that I could use a charcoal grill, but my neighbor's Airbnb next door could. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so, I'm not sure where that had come from, and it might have, you know, we'll look more into that, see what the, you know, see what the rationale is, and then, yeah, that's something that this body could consider, and say, wow, you know, maybe we, maybe we think that's a little bit overly restrictive, you know, how about removing that?
So, one question I had, I mean, obviously, maintaining who's staying there is, I think, one of the biggest challenges everyone faces, and I like that there's a logbook piece in there, but realistically, that's only as good as, you know, it is maintained, and retroactively doesn't solve any problems. Have there been any discussions on what, you know, how is that going to be actually executed? How is that activity of maintaining some level of insight into who is staying where or has stayed there, you know, what conversations have happened there? And I, again, I don't know that that's necessarily something you can phrase really well into an ordinance to say how it's tracked, but I think that's one that sounds great, but actually putting it into effect maybe is a little bit more difficult.
I, the, keeping the logbooks, and, you know, the good thing about that is that if we do encounter problems with a particular property, we've got that for review, and it's a standard that needs to be met, so if it's not being met, and there are problems with that property, then we can revoke the license.
Okay.
So, it's just, it's an additional condition that gives us some ability to say, hey, if, you know, if you're not doing this, you need to be doing this. It makes sense, I think it's, again, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure of where the genesis of that was, I do believe that, you know, there were other communities that had kind of adopted that.
I mean, I love the idea, yeah, I mean, I love the idea, it's more, are we expecting them to have just a, you know, three-ring binder where people sign in, or is it going to be digitally, where the city can look it up, you know, at any point in time, or something like that? That, I guess it's more how it's implemented is a question for me.
Right, okay, that's, that's good. And, you know, I intend to discuss all these comments with the Solicitor's Office, and if they make any amendments, you know, based on that, it's really why I wanted to at least get the ball rolling, have some informal discussion at this point, and then bring kind of a final draft, if you will, back.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Jake.
Well, I have one more question, and it has to do, it's page 3, it is A3, it's not when you highlighted, it says, combinations shall not exceed the number of occupants allowed within the applicable zoning district. Where in the zoning district do we define number of occupants in a allowable, by an occupancy?
That's a good question when it comes to the terminology, really, because it is, it's kind of, it's kind of semantics. That's one of the things that we had kind of agreed on early on, is that I, a lot of times, the conflicts that, again, we don't receive very many neighbor complaints, a couple properties here and there, but not, not a, not a great amount. But one of the complaints that we have heard is that they believed that there were multiple families staying at the home at one time, and that's, so this occupancy requirement of, hey, if it's a single-family dwelling, then the vacationers should be a single family, and that can be, and the family is defined in the zoning ordinance, as far as, you know, if you're all related, they may have a 12-person family, but they'd still be one family, versus the maximum number of unrelated individuals that could be staying at a residence, so the definition of family is in there. Occupants is a little bit different, on the residential side, that's a little bit more of a, kind of a building code determination, based on the size of the, of the structure, as far as how many occupants could safely occupy, as far as living quarters and sleeping quarters is concerned. And that, yeah, to your point, are we thinking then we would actually determine a maximum occupancy for these properties? That's another thing I'm going to ask the Solicitor, because that should be clarified, because that, if we are going to require that, that we essentially issue an occupancy permit with an occupant load.
Right.
For a residential property, then that's something that we need to make sure is fleshed out.
Okay.
From an administrative standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, you could say two per bedroom, two occupants per bedroom.
Right.
And, someplace in the city, you're gonna go find the basement carved up into nine bedrooms.
It's not New York.
Yeah?
It's not New York City.
Yeah, right, you know, it is.
Yeah, I feel like that approach makes more sense, just because, okay, you know, if it's just me traveling with two friends, three people, versus, you know, an eight-person family, whereas, the one-family, I think, piece of it, but occupancy probably makes more sense from enforcement, too.
Make it a lot simpler, if they were approved for six people, or eight people, or eight occupants.
Jake, I don't know if you have any insight on this, I had tried to get information from the police department on, like, crime stats, both of those were shut down, both write-to-know requests were shut down, but in terms of, you know, actual data, how many calls, you know, existed to some of these different areas, did we have a high number of noise complaints, those sorts of things? Do we have any data to back up, you know, where these trends are? And I ask that more from the question of, maybe we can use that to monitor how effective some of these ordinances are going forward, if we see there's a spike or a drop or something like that. Just being able to kind of look at, you know, is this doing what we want it to, is it addressing the underlying complaints that we've heard voiced? Has there been anything like that, do you know?
I'm not aware if there's any data from EPD as far as responding to nuisance complaints, and, you know, I mean, there's 15,000 rental units in the city, and whether they have any statistics on nuisance complaints, you know, the difference between owner-occupied properties and rental properties, and to go further to, you know, as far as whether a place is alleged to be a short-term rental, I'm not aware that there's been any kind of unusual or out-of-the-ordinary kind of statistic related to that, you know, as far as saying, well, you know, yeah, most of our complaints are from rental properties. Generally, my understanding is that the operators of the short-term rentals, and not necessarily specific to the city of Erie, but just in general, that they want, they don't want to be a disturbance to the neighborhood, they want.
They'll lose their business.
Sure, and, you know, they're investing in the property to make it an attractive vacation home, and part of that is the neighborhood, you know, that it's located in, I'm sure. So, I'm not aware, I know that we've heard previous testimony, and I think Colin before, probably before you were on the board, that, you know, when you, you have people coming up that are proponents of, of short-term rentals, you know, they've provided us with information regarding things like that, like, hey, these are not.
They had all the stats.
You know, they're not behavioral problems here, I mean, these are people just looking to have a, you know, the, there was one isolated incident where it was a, there was an accusation that it was a party that was thrown by vacationers, which turned out not to be the case.
Right.
So, I'm not aware of that.
No, that's, I mean, I knew it was a stretch, yeah, I knew it was a stretch, I was more just curious in terms of setting baselines.
But hence, hence building this into the language, you know, that they're, as a condition, which is not unusual for a zoning ordinance, it's, so it's an operational condition, and that is, that's, it's a reasonable condition to set, as far as operational conditions, even things like quiet hours. Other uses that have obtained variances, those conditions have been set, like for commercial uses adjacent to residential neighborhoods, they've set those conditions as well, to say, hey, we want you to limit your hours, because of the nature of your business, you do create some noise and things like that, we don't want disruption to the neighborhood.
Can't start construction before 8:00.
All right, thanks, Jake.
You're welcome, thank you.
The planning and neighborhood resource activity updates.
On Kathy's absence, I thought I could provide a little overview like Kathy has done previously, I'll try to be brief, but there are a lot of irons in the fire right now, in terms of things that are happening planning-wise, so just want to make sure you all were up to date on what's going on. We've talked about the Fairmount McClellan neighborhood plan previously, I think last year we did a preliminary, just overview presentation of what we're working on in that neighborhood, which is south of 12th Street, and then east of the Bayfront Highway, to the city's edge. So, we've been working with Eastside Grassroots Coalition, which is the neighborhood organization over there, the House of Mercy, and the Urban Erie Development Corporation, on drafting this plan, we have some preliminary recommendations, so we're hoping to bring that, we're still in the process of drafting the document, but we'll be bringing that either next month or November for your review, so that will be coming up the pipeline. We're, we also kicked off our participatory budgeting process, the city council allocated $5 million in American Rescue Plan funds for parks and public space improvements, so right now, we have a survey, we're asking for resident input on anything within the public space, so that's park improvements, bike lanes, pedestrian infrastructure, street trees, public art, streetscape projects, so, pretty much, they get to decide how the city would, will be spending $5 million. So, that survey is currently live, online, erie.p-a.us/parksurvey, or there's paper surveys at the front desk that people can also fill out, so we're trying to get the word out about that as much as possible, we've had a good response so far, almost over 400 individuals have taken the survey, which is great.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, but we would definitely want more, more participation from. Yeah, but we would definitely want more, more participation from folks, more ideas. So we'd welcome, if you guys want to push that out, just let people know that that's happening. And then we'll also be incorporating all of that information that we've collected through that process. We found out that we got a $50,000 grant from DCNR to complete a Parks and Recreation master plan for the city. So that will be kicking off in January of this year as well. So that will also be coming back to you with plan updates on that process as it continues. And then finally, we've also been working with the Redevelopment Authority, who has awarded some coastal zone management funds to complete a more detailed plan for the East Bay Front Greenway, which was a recommendation from Erie Refocused and East Bay Front Neighborhood Plan. So that RFP is now live, and they're seeking proposals due at the, towards the end of next month for Landscape Architect Planning Firm to come in and do some community engagement and go through the planning process for the demolition rehab, park planning. That's going to need to happen for that area. So a couple of things happening, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I'm good.
Good.
For the participatory budgeting, is there any plan to, you know, beyond, obviously, the web and the printouts you said are at the desk, are there any events where there's intended public outreach, whether it's going down to the food hall and getting food or something?
Yep. I've been going to some neighborhood association meetings and pushing it out there. Other, like, general neighborhood events, I'll be at Porch Fest this coming weekend in the West Bay Front. I went to the Little Italy Farmer's Market yesterday, and I'll be there again next week. Just a couple other, you know, neighborhood events that I'll be attending just to push out information and take it with folks, too, if they don't feel comfortable filling it out on their own, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah, but if you know of any other events, I'm happy to add it to the calendar.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any public comment? I don't see anybody. Okay, I need a...
I'm gonna ask our administrator if there are any Zoom participants that had any comments. I could go over there and see if I can check into that myself.
No, we're sorry.
No, none? Thank you, Frank.
All right. I'll make a motion that we adjourn. I need a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thanks.